Good evening. My name is Jane Castillo and I am the Board President of the Laffery Independent School District's School District Board of Trustees. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all of you today to this Fall Town Hall meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to inform the parents and the committee members information on the new opportunities for our students for this coming school year. In addition, we will share quite a bit of information on topics such as the budget, the mental health initiatives that have been planned for this year, the long-range planning committee, etc. You're going to see that there is quite a bit of information to share this afternoon. We certainly do appreciate your attendance at this meeting, so again, welcome. Assisting me in this presentation this afternoon are Mr. Julio Cabasos. He is our CFO. He will talk about the budget and finance. Mrs. Rachel Vento, Executive Director, Special Ed on the Mental Health Program. Mr. Umberto Flores will share with us, Executive Director for CNI. He will share with us the information on the calendars that are posted monthly on the website. Mrs. Lilian Ramos, Assistant Super Superintendent, will talk about bullying and conflict resolution, which of course is a big topic of concern for, you know, for all the districts. Mrs. Indictores, our Superintendent, will talk about the long-range planning committee that was initiated last spring. Last but not least, Mr. Carlos Homero. He is our Security Director and he will talk about the Laffery I S D Police Department. Once again, a new initiative for this school year, requiring drills and safety and security grant projects. So, my part is opportunities. Basically, the opportunities that we have for this school year are, if you are, if you have a program, first of all, the ACE Program. We are so, that's what I want to say, proud of this program, to see how much it's grown and flourished. Last year was the first year of implementation. This year is the second year. I'm sorry. I'm just sorry. Okay, okay. As I was saying, we are so proud of this program, the ACE Program. I was just talking to the Coordinator from Dominguez Elementary. He said that last year around this time, he had close to 30, 35 students. This year, he has over 100. That's just one campus. I'm assuming that all the other campuses also have that same growth rate. And that just says that our students are so interested in attending this after-school program. So, a new initiative. If you have a third or fourth grade student, what they're going, what they're going to do this year is have a co-ed, lab, good-bye program. So hopefully, we have some interest with our students and they will join this particular activity. If you have a high school student, we will initiate a dental assistant certification program. Can you imagine graduating at the end of this year or next year and being able to find a job right away as a dental assistant? I think that's just amazing, instead of having to work at a fast food. Not that that's bad, but at least this is a career that they can be looking forward to. In addition, once again, through the ACE Program, Grabber's Ed. Once again, this is free for our parents. They don't have to pay to send their children to get their Grabber's License. Last but not least, no, not last but not least, in addition, the dual enrollment opportunity program. Last year, and I'm sure if you walk in, you see about seven graduates. They graduated with an associate. I happened to be at that ceremony and it was just very, very touching to see the seven young, smiley faces. One of them was a proud daughter of our high school principal, Mr. Gassidis. I wish all of you had that opportunity to experience that. It was just, I can't, I just can't say it was awesome. It was amazing. And hopefully, we have more students, seniors of course, get that opportunity and graduate again with their associates in May. And that, what that does, that shapes off two years of time spent in college and of course, money spent also. And last but not least, the Gira Grant. This is a very, very new grant that we just heard last week that we received, a notification that we were awarded. So we really don't have specifics. We really don't know how much money will be awarded to Laffery. I'm sure all the information will be forthcoming, and this is for our current seventh grade students. If you have any questions, you can feel free to pop in at this time, or you can wait until some of the other presenters present their topics. Any questions? Okay. Next is Mr. Gallegos.
I wanted to share a couple items on finance and budget. This first slide shows our revenue budget, what we budgeted this year compared to last year. Our total budget for this was $39.1 million, upwards of about 7.5 or 19% is local resources. Most of that property taxes. State revenues, we budgeted about $27.9 million, about 71% of the budget. And then federal sources, about 9.3% of the total budget. This slide shows how we appropriate, the Board appropriates the budget. Again, $17.2 million for 44.1% of the budget goes into instruction. That's directly into the classroom. Another 7.5 for food services, about $2.9 million. That's two servers or cafeterias. $14.1 million or 5.5, and 14.1% for $5.5 million goes to plant maintenance and operation, and that's for the facility care, to include utility costs. Another $1.8 million and 4.70% of the budget goes to pay our debt. Again, total is $39.1 million, a little bit of a reduction of last year's budget of 40.1. You can see the comparison from this year to last year. This slide shows, you know, how we budgeted by obstacle. About 71% of our total budget goes for payroll, and that's to paying staff and benefits, health insurance, and other employee benefits that we have. Another 11% goes to service or supplies and materials. Again, 5% goes for debt repayment, and again, $39.1 million of the budget. This slide shows our property tax rate over the past five years. As you can see, in 2021, our tax rate was in total $1.20.22 for $100 worth of valuation. That's, you know, five years ago, the proposed tax rate that will be taken to the Board this upcoming year is giving about 95.95 cents, 95.6 cents. That's a reduction of a little bit over 25 cents over the past five years. This slide here compares our property tax rate and taxable values over the past six or seven years. As you can see, in 2018, 2019, you know, our, you know, values were around $400 million. They have increased, you know, to the current $750 million. So as our values increase, our property tax decrease, and that's the other line, the gray line that's going down, where $1.299 in 1819 in tax rate, and the proposal is going to be about 0.956 cents, you know, per $100 worth of valuation. And that's correlation, as property values do increase, districts, you know, reduce your tax rate, for the most part. This comparison is our enrollment in 88, you know, by year over the past 10 years. In 2013, 2014, we were about 3,600 students. We fast forward to 23, 24, it's about 2082. That's a reduction of about a little over 700 students over that course, you know, over the last 10 years. And then our attendance rate, if you look at our average daily attendance, which is how we get funded, in 13, 14, we're 3,300, you know, average daily attendance, or 96.3% of attendance rate, to the current, you know, 23, 24, our, our average daily attendance of 2,601, at about 92.9% of attendance rate. And, you know, that's about 70% of our budget comes from the state, 70% comes from the attendance that we currently have. We're always trying to, to increase our attendance rate. You know, pre-COVID, we're 96%, you know, over those years. After COVID, you know, and this is no different to other districts, you know, it's 92, 93%, you know, about 2 or 3% less than the previous years. So this slide is our staff-to-student ratio over the past 10, 12 years. In 2013, total student enrollment, 3,700. Total teachers, 241. That's a student-to-teacher ratio of 15.4. Total overall staff, we're 549, and that's a student-to-staff ratio of 6.8. Fast forward to 23, 24, again, our student enrollment, 2882, a reduction of over 700 students. We have reduced our teachers, you know, because we have less students. So we reduced teachers to 217. Student-to-teacher ratio is 13.3, you know, students to teacher. Still not at the 15.4 that we were 12 years ago. And total staff is 496, you know, total staff, student-to-staff ratio of 5.8. We have, you know, reduced enrollment, but at the same time, we have reduced staff, a little over 50, total staff. We're continuing to look at this, and as we need to make adjustments because of enrollment, certainly that's something that Superintendent and the Board will consider.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, sir.
Why do you think the student enrollment is so low?
It's, you know, ongoing over, you know, throughout the past five or six years, enrollment has declined pretty much throughout the area, which in one, you go through the districts like in Brownsville, Arlington, you know, Seminole, even up in there for Valley, they have seen a loss of reduction in student enrollment. A lot of factors, I mean, there's, you know, you know, lower birth rates, you know, from the work 10, 15 years ago, or even longer than that. You know, some, you know, additional competition, charter schools, you know, there's more schools, you know, of choice. So yeah, you know, every district in the, in the Valley has seen most of the reduction. Good question, sir. Federal and state grants, and this slide, you know, shows, you know, some additional funds that we do get from the federal state, about an additional $4.7 million that we incorporated into our budget this, this upcoming year. And this last slide, you know, this shows our financial accountability system. So this rating system was developed by T E A, you know, over 20 years ago. And for the last five years, we, this district has received a superior rating, an A rating the last five years, and we continue to look at that every year, try to make sure that we manage our funds appropriately, and we do get rated on that. So again, the last five years have been A rated, superior for the district. One of the other things that I do want to point out that I hadn't pointed out is that this year, the Board approved a salary increase for staff. So teachers receive a $2,500 increase, you know, across the board for teachers, and a 3% for professionals and 3.5% for for our personnel that the Board approved this, this year. And we incorporated that increases into our budget. And any questions for any of the audience?
On this point of reduction, I mean, I know you say it's been going down year after year, but do we have a plan in place to where, what can we do or what are we predicting? You know, what are we looking forward to? I mean, we don't want it to keep going down, right? One or the other direction, so like, what's up?
So certainly, I mean, and this goes by chime in, but we're always looking at trying to, to see what we can offer our students as far as academic and athletics and, and do as much as we can on that end.
I think one of the things that we really focus on is opportunities for students. And so last year was the first year we had an after-school program that is free to parents. So we feel like offering programs like that will increase our enrollment, students will want to come here. Our extracurricular, our athletic programs and band programs, and everything that we have like that from sixth grade on up, we think assists as well. Also, just providing opportunities in dual enrollment and AP, and all of those things are what we do to try to be competitive with the other schools. And so that is something, we have a lot of the principals, white principals of here here. We meet with them constantly to talk about what can we do that's fresh, that's new, that's an opportunity for students.
Thank you. Good question, sir.
On the budget, do you cut it down to, to programs like, for example, Special Ed, these things like that?
We do. You know, we have, you know, a specific budget for the different types of programs, and we offer special education is certainly one of them, and we do, you know, set aside some dollars for Special Ed. We set aside some ways for bilingual students, GT students. So we do have, we do separate it by, by that type of students.
Do we know the budget for that for this year?
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can tell you what we budgeted federally wise. We do have, you know, so that 224 there, I D F Part B, that is for special needs students. 572,000, it goes directly for the special needs students. We have some local dollars and state dollars that we also budget for special needs students.
Is that higher or lower than last year?
That is a little bit lower.
Oh, that's a little bit, you know, a little?
About 20,000.
Ah, okay.
And, and this year, you know, we did, you know, see a little bit of a reduction in our federal allotments, and which are these, you know, these are the federal allotments. Not a significant one, but you know, it was still a decrease.
And just to give you an idea of federal dollars, so probably back in 2010, 2012, for Title I monies that we used to give from the federal government, we would get about 1 point, 2.2, 2.3 million dollars. Now we're down to about 1.1 million. That's how much we have been cut in Title I. And Title I, what do we use for?
It's for, you know, we direct those for the low economic students at the different campuses, and we use them district-wide. But yeah, there's been a huge reduction, especially for us and, and, you know, a lot of other districts in Cameron County, not so much in Dotwell County, but in Cameron County, we've seen that reduction. So I think that was it. Any other questions? Thanks.
Good evening. I'm here, Rachel Mettle, the Executive Director of Special Education, but I'm going to touch a little bit on our mental health program that we started pushing a little bit more these last couple of years. You know, we've seen a, just a big need in our mental health for our students and for our staff. So we've worked together to kind of put this, you know, a collaborative effort within the district. You know, so we do have our mental health team, and our overall mission is that we provide a student-centered mental health program that's going to promote mental wellness, resilience, and just overall personal growth. Our goal for this is through collaboration between our campuses, within our departments, within our students, our staff, our parents, our community, that we help to help our students thrive, not only academically, but also emotionally. So that's our overall goal with our mental health program. As, you know, we're working towards this, we've kind of put together a lot of things that we were doing in isolation, but we're kind of just acknowledging that we're all working towards something. So these are just a few of the mental health initiatives that we've started last year that we're going to continue and push over through this year. Of course, we do peer-based interest groups, and this is important for our students to make, you know, social wellbeing. Students always want to feel like they belong. So being able to create groups that are, that help to make them feel belonged with same interests. You put students together that typically would not come together, but acknowledging that, that that's important for them for their social, emotional growth. So peer interest, peer-based interest groups is one of the things we're pushing towards. Of course, we always have individual counseling, and that's very descriptive and specific to our students' needs. And it's not only students in a special education program, it's also student, our general that, students that everybody faces, you know. Our students, I think, are put with so many pressures now, so many things that they have to balance as students, that sometimes they need somebody to, to express what they're going through. So individual counseling is something that we're always provide for our students. You know, family and parent engagement trainings, you know, trying to do things like this to bring community in and share with our parents what we're doing, what we have, what we can offer to, to them, to our students, but also working with Mrs. Laredo, with the parental engagement groups and presenting to, to our parents that attend those meetings. Just various things throughout, throughout the district. Last year, we're trying to put together our artistic parents support group and just kind of ensuring that there are other parents that are going through these difficulties or, you know, struggles, and then just having somebody to share not only the struggles, but also the successes within each other, and just providing that support for each other. Meaningful work groups, that's something else that we started to push in one of our campuses, and that's more for our students that we're, we're getting into some trouble in this, to redirect those energies to other things. So what we did was we worked with our parents and our administration to put these little groups together where they build something, they build something for the campus, and it's, it helps to develop that pride, that ownership, that, that desire, you know, that they're part of something. So that's another initiative that, that we are working with. Social skills groups, somewhere students struggle socially, how to, you know, form relationships, how to communicate with one another. So these are very descriptive in the fact that we have one of our mental health professionals that kind of devise scenarios and we role-play. And if a student is this, or if an adult is this, this is the appropriate way to respond, and this is the inappropriate way. Just different types of social skills, opportunities for them. Restorative practices and circles is something that we did as a district to kind of not only train our mental health professionals that's doing this, but also all of our administration. They went through three days of training on how to work to rebuild relationships with our students and within our staff as well. The Mental Health Conference, of course, we always want to offer those opportunities with the district. Mental Health Crisis Toolbox is another initiative that we're working towards, and that is putting together these toolkit when we do have moments of crisis. And it's not always, you know, crisis that we hear in the news, but it could be things that we face as a district, like the loss of a teacher, the loss of a student, and these are all things that we should, as a district, have ready to go when we need to provide these support services. And of course, just the list of community resources, and I do have some handouts to pass out to our, to our parents regarding, there's a lot of resources within our community, not only here at Laffery I S D, but within our, you know, our outside community. One of the other things that we are also working towards, you know, to enhance our mental health within the district is that we've collaborated with UTRGV with access grant, their Access 2 grant. And the goal with the collaboration between us and UTRGV is that we help to produce mental health professionals within our community. In the past, it's always been our school psychologists or counselors or social workers, and those numbers down here in our area are rather low. So we're trying to work together to create these, these professionals that will stay within our community. So we have three additional personnel that are working within our, with our department to serve our district. We have a school psychologist intern who's with us the entire year, and they're funded through UTRGV to help and service our students and our parents. We also have a counseling intern and a social worker intern that are, that we're working with 25 hours a week that they're with in our district to serve our community, our students. So our goal with, with the UTRGV grant is again, that we're, you know, providing them an opportunity for real world experiences with the support staff that's needed to ensure that once they do go out, and our goal is that they stay within our community and not go to another, another town, another city, but that they, they stay within our population and help to grow our mental health resources down here in the Valley. So those are just a couple of the things that we're working as a district for mental health. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. I'm the parent of two special needs boys. One is still here, one I have to take out of the district because I felt that your program was not adequately trained for my child. Now, you talked about autism parents support groups. I was told about that last year. I only went to one meeting, so the consistency is not there. So me as a parent, I'm doing this, and I honestly can't believe what I'm hearing because I was never given those choices as a parent. Now, the autism parents support group was supposed to be consistent. I only had one last year, and I was never, I was never called again to have other meetings.
We do offer several meetings. We did offer one large group meeting, and then we would work with our parents individually and connect them with others, you know, within, within our area or similar situations. Our, our school psychologists also work in the home with some of our parents that are willing for us to go and assist them in the home to provide those resources and those supports. And some parents or some students need more support than others. It just depends, it's an individual type of situation. But our goal with having these parent meetings is that they form relationships within each other as we're getting there, you know, together. And we did have several parents that made connections within each other, within the community, that created friendships and relationships outside of the school, and that is our goal, when we have those parent meetings, that they, they do get to see each other and meet each other. We also do like the Autism Walk, that's another community event, and that's also for parents to be able to see that there are others out there to, to make those relationships with and for, you know, those positive support systems. So our goal is that we do meet more than two or three times a year, but again, it's an ongoing thing, it's an ongoing mental health initiatives for the district. So unfortunately, I apologize that maybe it wasn't fit for, for, for your specific needs, but of course, it's always something that we want to work towards, to, to help and grow within our community, because it is a small community, but there are a lot of parents out there within our community that do need these supports. So again, our, our goal is always to bring awareness to others and to form the relationships within each other, the district and within the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Down, how about Mr. Flotis?
My name is Umberto Flotis, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Thank you all for being here this evening. So at the end of each school year, we survey and we poll our parents, asking them, what can we do better as a district? And one of the suggestions that we had, or one of the comments that we had was to improve communication. So a new initiative that our Superintendent, Mrs. Flotis, started was us having a, having all our calendars, all our district, our campus and department calendars readily available to you all as parents. If you can, if you would like to, you can take out your phones right now, scan the QR code that you see here on the screen, and it is going to take you to where you can now see the tab where you can click on or look at all the different calendars from our, our schools and our departments. So if you were to scan the QR code, and if you don't want to, we also have this available on our website, and on that one, you would click the tab, and on that tab, you would then see all the different schools and the different departments here in our district. So for example, right here, once you do scan the QR code, this is the choice that you're going to see at the top corner, where you see the word calendars, the plus and the minus sign, you would click on that, and then you would then see all the different schools that we have and all the different departments as well. And everyone has their calendar readily available for you. One of the things that we're doing is that we're asking our schools and our departments to have these calendars ready a week before the next month. So we already have September posted, so by the end of September, we want to have October ready for you as parents, so that you can see the different activities or the different functions that are happening here in our district. So again, this was based on the survey that we asked our parents of what we can do to improve, and this is one way that we're reaching out to you all, so that we can inform you and keep you informed, all the different activities and events that are happening, not just at the campuses, but within the departments as well. On here, you will also see family and community engagement, our migrant department as well. So they are also included here. Are there any questions regarding your calendars? If not, I'm going to pass this on over to Ms. Ramos.
Good evening, Laffery Community, and thank you for joining us this evening. One of our key focuses this school year is working with our students and staff on conflict resolutions. Our counselors are incorporating restorative practices at every grade level. These practices include building relationships, respecting others, taking responsibility, and repairing relationships. The goal is to encourage communication between students rather than resorting to aggressive methods to express their feelings. We continue to emphasize on our students' appropriate behaviors. For example, during our pre-K through sixth grade classes, P E classes, students receive presentations on de-escalating behaviors, understanding what constitutes bullying, and the importance of communication. Our school counselors are having weekly sessions with our students on appropriate behaviors. Our junior high school teachers, counselors, and coaches also continue to have lessons with them as well on de-escalation, effective communication, and also maintaining healthy relationships. relationships. These lessons will continue throughout the year in our PE classes. Also, also open communication with our students is essential for restoring relationships. It's important for our students to recognize the difference between bullying and behaviors that are rude or mean as this understanding is the first step in rebuilding student relationships. Throughout the campus, we have visuals as reminders to our students as what is bullying? What constitutes bullying? Our staff is also working using a bullying checklist to assess whether an incident qualifies as bullying. This bullying checklist is on the website. This checklist guides our staff in making the necessary decisions when an incident occurs. Our goal is to continue to monitor our students' behavior toward others and guide them to better communicate and understand each other through respect and positive relationships.
Any questions, Sam?
Yes, any questions on bullying conflict?
Thank you. So we wanted to, this year, get ahead of the bullying and get ahead of that type of behavior. And so from the very beginning, our principals have done a great job of meeting with our students, having the teachers discuss that. So what's a better behavior, all the way from pre-K of being kind to all the way through high school. So the next area, I wanted to spiral it back about attendance. You asked a question about enrollment and I didn't talk about attendance very much. Mr. Cabosos mentioned that pre-COVID, our attendance was about 96% district-wide for the year. Now it ranges about 92.9, 93. And so that's a couple of percentages lower. Every percentage lower that our district is, that's about $200,000 that we don't get from that 70% from the state. So if we're at 92% and we used to be at 96%, that's about 800,000. We lose about $35 roughly a day for every time a student's absent. So not only are they missing out on instruction, but it also does impact us financially. And so I just wanted to spiral back and explain that because I think I talked about enrollment, but not so much attendance.
Can you excuse that, Mrs. Ross?
It doesn't matter. If they're not sitting in the chair, this day doesn't give us money, excused or unexcused. So they have to actually be attending during the day for us to get the funding. And so there's, if you listen to anything with legislators, you'll hear a lot of talk about schools should be funded by enrollment and not about attendance, but you know, that right now we are funded that 70% by attendance, being in the chair. So the next item I want to discuss a little bit is our long-range planning committee. We have established a long-range planning committee. If anybody in this room would be interested in joining us, you can let us know at the end. But right now, the committee has had two walkthroughs through district facilities. We've also met once and we have a meeting coming up soon. We're looking at the status of our facilities and getting input from our parents and community of what they think that we need and we're expressing to them areas that we think that are needs, not necessarily wants, but needs. In the spring, we're going to be looking at a five-year strategic plan for the district and that will be the board along with the committee getting together to look at that. So that is something new that we're doing, a long-range planning committee. And again, if you're interested, just contact central office, central administration, talk to me after the meeting if you're interested in joining that meeting and being a part of that committee. Any questions?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Park Fumet, Office Security Director for the School District. I'm welcome, you all for coming tonight and thank you very much. As we're going to cover here, it's going to be obviously the formation of a police department. As right now, we're looking at our state inspection, the week of the 16th of this month. Once we can get that inspection certification, we can go ahead and proceed with the hiring process and get our department established. Right now, we are, we do have armed security at every campus that's contracted until we can get our department up and running. As right now, we're looking at best case scenario, we're looking at sometime in October of this year, you get our department fully functioning. We'll have five full officers, including myself, makes it five. It'll be for the entire district and then as we grow, obviously we'll add officers from there. Any questions as far as the department? Our required drills by the state DEA mandates, we have five specific drills we have, which are the ones listed here, our hold, to secure, the lockdown, the evacuate and the shelter. These state mandates, we have them throughout the year. They're mandating also fire drills. In here, fire drills are four a year, two in the fall and then two in the spring. As far as lockdowns, there are two, one in the fall and one in the spring and just the other ones, the hold, evacuate and shelter, one per year for each one. Just, I like parents to be informed as far as what these drills are. Always be, the biggest one's always going to come out, folks. Whenever you hear your child say, hey, we want a hold and come pick me up, the hold is the bottom of the tier. Okay? Anytime we have a hold, this can be something simple as maybe there's a water leak in the hallway, we don't want the kids to walk out, somebody just step and fall. So if junior's calling, you're saying, hey, come pick me up, there's a hold, just understand this, we can issue that for just about anything, something that's going on. And it just goes up the ladder from there. If we're in a lockdown situation, then obviously it's going to be followed with additional information that's going to go, that's going to follow, which is going to lead to the next one.
On the holds?
Yes, sir.
Is that done? You can do the politicking?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are those calls made by you?
Those, that, these drills can be initiated by anybody within the district. We use a Raptor system and any staff member, any teacher can initiate that. If they feel they have to, they can initiate it, just not, not just admin can, they can stop us. So with being informed, I know one of the biggest things, as myself as a parent, I want to know what's going on in my school, especially if something serious comes up. Hey, let me know, which is why we promote this is on our district page, which is the text messaging. Feel free to message, text to 67587 and text Y. You'll receive any and all messages from the district regarding your campus if a situation arises. A hold, I'm going to tell you, we're probably not going to send out messages for a hold. Secure, anything that's your child, that's going to be more, that's going to bring attention or as a parent, hey, I'm going to want to know what's going on, then we're going to give out information from there. That is, that's the best way to receive any kind of information. Okay? Any questions on that? Anything additional?
The only thing that, that, last year we had a situation that we had to evacuate and send some students from a campus to another campus. If you have this text messaging, we every hour, for about three or four hours, we updated parents what was going on. So that's why it's so important that if you want to keep updated, that you have this text because we will update and let parents know exactly what's going on. If you don't have this, then you're just having to find out by word of mouth. So this is the best situation. Know that anytime if there were to be a situation, we're always going to secure the situation and then we will send out a text. And so I know that sometimes parents want it immediately, but our first priority is to make sure that the safety of the students and the staff. And as soon as we get everybody in that situation, then we will send out a text.
Thank you. The next item that we would like to discuss is the safety and security projects that you can see throughout the district. The FEDIIST administration applied for some safety grants. The first cycle was, and we received it, we applied and we received $2.2 million. And then for the safety two cycle, we received $150,000. We were pleased to announce that we did finish the projects, the fencing, the A-Ford fencing that you see throughout the district, exterior doors, doors that are secured and locked, side of panic alert technology throughout the district, throughout the campuses, exterior door numbering and the master key lock box. Those are some security requirements that were mandated by the state. We do still have monies available, as you can see, from the $2.2 million, we have $850,000 and from the $150,000, we still have the $150,000. But that amount of money has been, monies are allocated for projects that are still pending, that we're still, we have allocated throughout the district for the projects. One of them is also getting our security, our police department up and ready. Any questions on the safety's pretty projects of the district? Thank you.
Well, I have a question for the chief.
Sure.
I don't, that might be a little premature. I don't know if a policy has been written, but do you guys have a policy for restraining and for the kids, like elementary kids under 10 years old?
Yes, we have policies all, we actually have all that right now before we can even submit our application to the state, which is TCO for approval. So all that has to be submitted and then once you say, okay, we've got it, then yes, all that's been vetted and looked over and approved, not only by our district, but also by the state.
And then we can see on the website or something?
The policies.
Once we become a police station.
Yes, sir.
Right now, yes. So I know it's really hard for us to not call him chief of police yet. He's security director until they, until they give us that and then we take it to the board to change from security director to chief of police. But as Mr. Ometo said, he had to submit all of that and it had to get approved before we even get the stuff that we have September 16th. So once we get all of that, then that will be available. But that's something that he's been working on since the spring. So that is all that we have today. There are no cards. If you have any questions that you want to share with us, you can write it down. We'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. But I do thank you for coming. One of the things we wanted to do this time, the PowerPoint will be on our website. So if you're interested in all of the finance and budget that Mr. Cabosos talked about, it will be on our website along with the tape of this in case somebody could not be here. So we thank you so much and we have door prices.